Oh yeah, you could've come with us. That's terrible Tiffany, I can't believe you.
I feel real bad.
You should. It's because you weren't in court today. If you would've been over there, we'd have been thinking about it.
That's my fault.
Yeah.
Can everyone see the room that's online? Can someone try to respond for me please? We didn't hear anything, I tried to reset the sound real quick.
Last thing more now. I started on one day like my Saturday and Friday. The very first time.
Are you sure that's green?
Law enforcement called me.
Can the folks online hear us?
Yes, I can hear.
Sweet, we can hear you, that's great. And are you gonna stay over there?
I'm gonna have to, I can't get the mouse to work.
Okay, so I can pay attention to this one. You let me know when you're done with attendance.
Yes, can we have one?
You ready for me to start?
Yep.
You started recording?
Yep.
Okay. Alright everyone, I'm gonna call us to order. It is 1:06 PM. Thank you all for being here today. I apologize, I was running a little bit late from court. And then we had a little snafu with the owl device not functioning like it has been before, but we fixed it, I think, so. If at any point we lose audio or something, if the people online will let us know, so that I can stop and we can fix it if we need to, but I think we're gonna be okay. So, first we have program reports, and we'll start with teen courts.
Well, monitor on vacation. So basically, she didn't send me to report. And she was saying she wouldn't be back right now, but it's basically the same thing. I think we got three orbit referrals. And we had one completion. And basically it's like...
Okay, thank you. Project Challenge?
Good evening. We scheduled for 52 this year. Our beginning count is five, and our mission with three. Successful satisfaction completion with three. And our ending count might end up to be five. But we do have, we have been picking up some more.
We just got seven.
We just got seven. So, they ain't beginning to pick up.
Okay.
They're starting to fight.
Okay.
On the community service hours completed for this month is 27. Year-to-date, 104. Restitution amount earned for this month is $50. Year-to-date, 350. No, right now, we got no updates. There's a thing going on, but we did get some more job sites and stuff. We got Dollar Generals, and we'll be going to them. Know their parking lot.
Okay.
And Ms. Gell, she sitting in the boardroom? Ms. Gell, the one who owns the church? Is that her name? Yeah?
Um, Gell, yeah.
Yeah, so we're still doing this church out in Libya.
She's on the computer.
Ms. Gell will be down at 13.
Okay, thank you. High school seminar, I don't see... Someone online for high school seminar?
Someone from the high school is on, I don't know.
Somebody that's online that wants to give a report for high school seminar, maybe? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Has, have the members had an opportunity? We, I'm sorry. We don't have any old business that will go to new business. Have the members had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from last month? And is there any discussion that needs to be had about the meeting minutes from last month?
I have one program change.
What?
It is where? I write down... Project Challenge, it is restitution earned in year-to-date, it's $34 and $104. So I have to make those corrections.
Okay, so, for those of you that couldn't hear, Joanna said that in reviewing the recording, it looks like the minutes for restitution earned and the year-to-date amount were wrong.
No, sir, it was the community service portion. So it should be 24 hours and 104 year-to-date.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
Okay, so it says 24 hours and the year-to-date is wrong, it says 214, it needs to say 104.
104, yeah.
Okay, so we will make that change on the minutes. Other than that change, is there any other discussion about the minutes from last month? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Alright, I'll give it to Ms. Bartholomew this time, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any objection to approving the minutes from last month? Okay, seeing none, we approve. Alright, moving on to the next item of new business. High School Seminar has sent a notice. It's addressed to the board, actually. Was this attached to the?
Yeah.
So it was attached to the agenda today. If you haven't reviewed it, it's attached to the agenda packet. It wasn't actually addressed, it wasn't actually emailed to the board, but it addresses the board. And basically it says that High School Seminar is withdrawing from their funding with JCPC for this fiscal year. So, we have started the process of, I guess, reallocating the funds. To that end, we will need the Funding Committee to have a meeting, to propose a way to reallocate those funds according to, you know, what was requested. And it sounds like because of all that we went through before, I think there's some places we can put this money, so. The first order of business though, will be to get the Funding Committee to meet, to make a recommendation, to present to the council. My understanding is the council would have to get it approved before December 31st?
No, not for this, because it's already allocated in the county under the plan, so we don't, we're not under that.
Do we have a deadline?
No, it's just, I mean, it would be best to try to get it allocated by January, if possible.
But the council could vote on the proposal at the January meeting? Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. So, that gives the Funding Committee some extra time to meet, to get that done. I will send out an email to the Funding Committee about that, to help facilitate that process, so that you all can schedule a meeting. And Mr. Diaz Franco, it appears is the chairperson, so we'll have him run point on getting that organized. And then they'll make a recommendation to the council at the January meeting, and we'll vote on that to deal with that extra money. Any questions about that?
Just comment.
Yep.
In the letter that Dr. Shuey provided, she's how, she's put in bold that the monitoring, audit, and paperwork requirements appear to have increased significantly following the appeal. I had spoken to Dr. Shuey numerous occasions, and let her know that the fiscal responsibility has not changed in our policy for JCPC, that the requirements for a general ledger are that each expense needs to be in detail to show what was expended, which is the reason why they had such trouble with the paperwork. So I just wanted to make that clear, that there was no increase in paperwork requirements. They stayed the same for many years within our policy. Just wanted that noted for the record.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns about this?
Does that mean they haven't been compliant the past six years? Sorry.
No, what I found out through my communication with them was that the prior year before 2425, they were funded in 2223 funding year. And there were, there was a different administration at the time that was overseeing High School Seminar during that fiscal year. And I looked at the records from 2223. The fiscal records were within the compliance of our policy. And it had the general ledger, had all the expenses. She had indicated, from what she knows about the history of the program, that there was a bookkeeper internally there at Bradstreet that was ensuring that all of the expenses were documented. And for this last fiscal year, they didn't have an internal bookkeeper, and it was up to the Lee County Schools Finance Director. They just could not locate the, all of the expenses per our requirements, so.
Okay, so you don't know where the money went?
The, as I had explained to them, the...
I'm just curious.
Our department will... We've reconciled what receipts and invoices they submitted. I'm trying to remember how much it was last year that they received. 6,500 is ballpark what I can remember. So there was, I don't have the exact figure, but there was possibly $2,000 to $3,000 that were expenses for Amazon purchases. And they claimed it was materials for the youth incentives items, but could not locate those Amazon orders with the specific items that were purchased. And so, they are liable for paying back that amount. Our final accounting makes those adjustments when the final accounting report is submitted. And so there is a refund that they are owed. If they had all the receipts and all the invoices per our policy, then they would not have such a large encumbered amount of that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments about High School Seminars withdrawal? Excuse me, alright, seeing none, moving on to... Next would be the public comment portion, do we have any public comments? I don't think I see any members of public online. I had a note that maybe you had something to talk about.
Oh, it's me, I'm sorry.
I can find something.
So, Lee County in conjunction with Autumn's Department of Community Support Services recently submitted a grant for Department of Health and Human Services, and it is an expansion on other grants that they already have. I guess they received additional funding or funding came available through various means, and it is an expansion upon their substance abuse and substance use disorder grants. So this grant specifically does not identify specifically opioid or alcohol or any other specific substance, it is all substances. So, the grant allows for a very broad range of things you could apply for. So we applied for expansion on current services offered through the Renew Program. So that is stuff that already works with opioid funds, and our mental health and substance use disorder treatment services. And we wanted to fill gaps, so the gaps we look to fill, and our proposal was proposing we fill, are juveniles, that was the big focus, specifically mental health and substance use disorder in juveniles. The Hispanic or Latino population and...
And the night and evening programming for like the small groups?
Oh, low to moderate income and Medicaid expansion of services to individuals. So, reentry and pretrial individuals will continue to receive services, but those services will be expanded into nights and weekends. So we'll have like peer counseling, and that'll be offered for any individual that meets certain standards can be eligible for that. So that could be low income, that could be their reentry, they're with pretrial, they're juvenile, or through JCPC. So anybody that meets those standards, we're expanding those. And one of the things that we're doing is helping to fund additional community behavioral health clinician positions, either through contract or as a position in the county, so that we can continue to expand the safe...
Seeking safety.
Seeking safety program that we currently have piloting at Bradstreet, so that we can do it to all schools.
And they've asked for Rolanda to, for our community, our clinician to do two classes starting in January. So she'll be doing that. And then we also have an offer lever out to somebody for our vacant mental health position. And as long as he signs it tomorrow afternoon, we will have a male who is bilingual on our staff, so.
We'll find out in December if we've been awarded that grant or not. So we'll, we'll know pretty soon, we'd be able to get the ball rolling before the end of the fiscal year, which is really cool.
Yeah, and he has a background, he's a school counselor for another county, so he has a background working with youth, so.
Awesome.
Thank you. Excuse me, any questions for Joanna or Autumn about that grant? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the, well, are there any further public comments? Okay, seeing none, moving on to committee comments. Funding and Review Committee, I don't see... Doesn't look like Juan is on here, he's not in here, so we'll go to Bylaw Committee. We are at the point where I will contact the Bylaw Committee members and we'll go over the bylaws. I'm finally ready. I know I keep saying I'm almost ready, I'm ready. Monitoring Committee, any comments on the Monitoring Committee? Probably not. Okay, seeing none, on to the star of the show today, the Risks and Needs Committee. I know you all met and hopefully are ready to give us a presentation.
Yes.
The floor is yours.
So, we met last Friday, two Fridays ago. It was a really good meeting, very productive, about three and a half hour long meeting. We reviewed the data that was sent out to everybody. So, I'm not gonna go over it slide by slide. We did discuss that it is a self, the YOZI is self-reported, but also that it's done in conjunction with DJJ. So they are also gathering information and with their investigation, so it's sort of a blend of information provided and information provided by the counselors. So, what we, we looked at the resources that we have in the community, we were looking at gaps in the community. What I would say just from the data and what the YOZI provided, and then also just in our discussion, so at the meeting it was Dakota and Tiffany from the DA's office. Michelle was with us from DJJ, Beverly was here from the mental health sector, along with myself and David. We were able to have some really organic conversation about what the gaps are, what we see as the biggest and most urgent needs in the community. And then also just discuss some of the concerns we had and some ideas that we have going forward. And, you know, one of the concerns that is also a possibility for growth is that we, the RFP, it's an RFP, right? I'm starting to confuse with my letters. The RFP is also attached to this, and what we're really asking is for JCPC to reach out to your community members that you know, to try to get as many applications, as many ideas for programming as possible sent in. Because it feels like we're very much on this little hamster wheel of this is how it goes, this is how it's always done, and we're just gonna do it this way. There's a lot of room for more people coming into the mix and more partnerships to be available. So, that's the big ask from us right now. And this is also kind of going along with the Funding Committee. One of the ideas that came about from our meeting was having a breakfast, sort of like Trillium does, if anybody's ever attended those, for community stakeholders, for the Board of Commissioners, the courthouse, you know, some of the courthouse players to get together, use some of that funding that's coming back to host something to bring the community in and engage with them. We're also asking, well, I'm asking, but I think as a group, also encouraging community engagement with the Board of Commissioners. Because there's a lot of things that we want, there's a lot of things that, gaps that we have. But if we're not showing up at the Commissioners' meetings now, I will say, full disclosure, I can't get up and speak for it just because I am the Director of one of the departments. I'm speaking about all the time, and so it's like, oh, this is like what Autumn's, you know. Thing is, she pester's us, but if we can get more community members to come to say, this is, you know, something that we believe in, we need more funding. Other counties are helping fund their JCPCs, that maybe it'll start, and I'm not saying it's going to immediately, but just start as we start pushing through the funding process. Because the county starts talking about money as soon as we get back from Christmas. Like the first, second, third week of January, there's already like, oh, you need to be looking at this and that, doing your budget. They do a workshop and retreats during the holidays. So, that would also be our ask, is if you feel inclined to do a public comment and start, you know, asking, or if you know Commissioners outside of here, reaching out to them, sending a letter or email, just saying like, I sent on JCPC, this is something that's important to our community. I had shared, you know, one of the gaps that is on here is, that's in the summary, is activities for youth over 14. One of the things that, there's a lot of talk around, and the Commissioners have even approved exploring it, is the PALS program, doing a youth program. But if we don't have community engagement and community interest, it will, you know, just sort of go into the atmosphere like it has before and filter away. So, that's the takeaway from the meeting. Also though, if you do look at the data that was provided, mental health and substance abuse are two of the ones that stick out to me, and probably because just what my department handles as far as where we are higher than the state. And, you know, we're trying really hard to engage the county on addressing that and my department with addressing that, so hopefully, you know, that will help there. But the RFP that is attached at the end here, sorry, I'm sort of all over. When you get all these numbers going on, I'm gonna trust that the rest of the committee and David and Joanna, like the numbers people jump in, so. But the RFP that's attached, it marks what we're looking for, you know, applications for. And I would say most of them are the same as last year, or very similar. Yes, is there a need for all of them? Possibly, I think so, on one hand. But these are the ones that are most important, and these are the ones, you know, some of the other ones are there, like family counseling. We just have to help make them accessible, and that's a lot of what my department does, is coordinating, you know, this programming, the assessment, stuff like that. But these are the ones that are most in need, and we're always looking to do, as a government employee, we're always looking to do more with less money, so. I hate to sound like I'm being cheap, but it's not. We gotta do more with less, as little as possible, so. But I don't know if anybody else from the community has anything to add.
Excuse me, thank you. Any questions for Autumn about her presentation? Or about the RFP in general? And if you're looking at your agenda packet, I think the RFP is like the second to last. It's a two-sided page in the agenda packet.
I'll just throw in, I know Rolanda had came to juvenile justice and made a presentation, and my court counselors in Lee have used her. And they have nothing but good things to say about her services, the turnaround time, getting assessments back to us. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And she will be in charge of shaping and molding the person coming in to have those, that same timeline and, and dynamic. So she'll, she'll get them on the right track, so. But yeah, I wish we could get like three or four Rolandas. It would be a lot easier. Oh, the one other thing I forgot to mention, I think we discussed doing the RFP in January, when the other ones dropped, like for the other counties, because we felt like if we do it now, it's going to get lost in the holiday, like chaos that every county goes through, so. If anybody has a different idea on that date, we're open to it then, but.
Okay. What I will say is Joanna informed me before the meeting that she can get it posted sooner, as soon as like the beginning of December. Is there some requirement that it's only allowed to be posted for 30 days?
As long as it's 30 days, if it, if.
So it has to be at least 30 days?
At least 30 days, but more can, more is always there.
Okay, so if, if no one has any objection to modifying the advertised date from January 12th, I guess we could have it.
We mentioned 45 days during the RFP, unless you want to go longer.
Well, Joanna said through what she has to do as far as like getting it posted in the newspaper and online, she can get it on the website as of December 1st, and the first running in the Sanford Herald would be December 2nd. So we could just do December 2nd as the advertised date, if, if everybody's on board with making that one change. And that would give, you know, the better part of two months to.
So you're saying post during the holidays?
I mean, it would be available for people to access, review, and submit, starting December 2nd.
So my concern with actually doing it during the holidays is what happened last year. It was posted during the holiday season, and even with Project Challenge, they got down to the crunch time of actually seeing the RFP and it being posted. So I would be concerned about, and you got like a week, almost a week or so where people take vacation during December. So my suggestion would be wait until we come back to the New Year, like we may have, then post from January. Now, we can extend it past the 30-day mark and do 45 days and stay it, but I don't know that I would do it in December, because people take vacation, this is the time for people to travel and do things with their families, it is the holiday season.
So maybe we post it sooner in January, instead of waiting until the 12th?
We, we do have to, in order to maintain our schedule, we have to vote and have presentations in February from the programs.
Yeah, we're not going to change the.
Otherwise we're delayed.
We won't change the due date.
That's the only restriction.
The deadline is February 13th, I didn't anticipate changing that. We're just, I guess we're just looking at whether or not we want to.
What's the cost of running it in December and in January?
A lot. It's, it's like $400 something dollars each time. So right now, that's one of the only items that's in the admin budget. We budget $500. I usually have it posted just like this, in its regular form, because the way that they post things otherwise is they just take the text and it just runs in really tiny columns, and it's really small font. So for accessibility issues, I just keep it in the format.
I thought we had revised that, because as long as it's posted on a website and then circulated to the.
Oh, that's right. We don't have to do that anymore. I'm so sorry, everyone.
You don't have to post on newspaper. As long as it's posted on a website.
Thing doesn't matter.
Okay, so we can, we can just post it on the website. That's good, that saves a bunch of money.
And then the emails circulating gets it out.
So do you all want to post it starting January 5th? That's just a week before the 12th.
That's fine. I'm okay with that.
But if we do, is there still a price for online?
No, it's, it's the county website.
I just go on and post it.
Is there a drawback, posting in December and then letting it run through February? If there's no price? Is it like a?
The only thing I was thinking about is that our NC ally system, where it has the application, there are IT folks on the backend, and every year, like, it's not ready to, for, for new, for new applications in the new, in the new fiscal year. That IT process sometimes is delayed till like December 15th or the 18th before they get it live on the system. So if it was any earlier in early December, if somebody was trying to apply, they would get some technical problems with that.
That's good insight. So I guess our options are, we can get it posted January 5th, that's the first week back after the New Year. Or we can leave it as January 12th, and I'm, you know, I'm opening the floor for discussion on, on that. It doesn't sound like there's any cost to having an extra week of it being posted, and then the deadline would still be February 13th, which would be the Friday before our February meeting on the 18th. So anyone have any further discussion about whether you want to keep it to be posted on January 12th or posted on January 5th? Ms. Atkins, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just had a question. Since it's not required to be in the paper, how is that actually getting to the community? Or how are we advertising to the public for this opportunity? Because people don't randomly look on the county website, just curious.
Part of it is we have like, you know, some programs that have put in information that they're interested in receiving that kind of notice, and they're on like an email list, so it gets sent to an email list. Also, I think Autumn was saying as part of her presentation, that was part of her ask from the committee, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but she was kind of putting it on members of the council also. If we know of programs that we think fit, you know, something that we're looking to fund, you know, giving them a nudge and saying, hey, there's this money that's available, you know, your program might be a good fit, why don't you put it in an application? So I think, you know, we need to, I think Autumn's point was, we need to hit this from a bunch of different sides to try to increase visibility, because I agree with you, I think historically, the same folks look at it, the same folks apply, it's not a very large pool of people. And there's, you know, there's more resources out there that could be applying that aren't. So did that answer your question? Do you have follow-up questions?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's another way, if there's, I don't know, a social media marketing that can happen, because I feel like our county would be missing out on opportunities if it's not, you know, put out there broadly.
Can you get it posted to the?
So the distribution list that we have to submit to the state, that distribution list currently is the website, the Lee County website. Physical copies are printed and posted in all county buildings, public areas, including both the main county library and the Broadway library. There's a list of area nonprofits that it will go out to and social media marketing. So I just would make like some sort of post about the RFP and have people go to the website to view the RFP information and then submit.
And the county has some kind of social media person?
It would go through the county's social media.
Okay. And then it would be up to us to hopefully, you know, advocate and try to get some more people involved, so. Any other questions, comments about the RFP? Okay, specifically about the date, does anyone have any objection to posting it as of January 5th? Okay, I don't see any objection online, no objection in the room, so. The RFP as is attached to the agenda, other than changing the date advertised to January 5th, 2026, I would entertain a motion for the council to vote to approve that RFP.
Approve the RFP.
You're making a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. And any opposed to approving the RFP in the format as attached to the agenda, other than change advertised to January 5th, 2026? No objection online, no objection in the room, it's passed. Thank you, we have made it past the first milestone of the funding process, I'm very excited about it. All right, moving on to what is next, court counselor comments. Any comments from the court counselor?
No.
Thank you. Area consultant comments?
I believe I sent a resolution to you and Joanna.
Do you know when?
Would have been sometime early this month, but just to let you all know, the, our department has submitted a request to the legislature back in probably March of this year with fiscal needs for our facilities, for the hiring and infrastructure. They also put in a request to increase the local allocations to the county JCPCs. As you know, or heard of, that the legislature, they have been in session in the fall, but they didn't really pass anything other than mini budgets. Almost like in the federal government shutdown, they would just pass these little mini budgets for any funding that might need to happen for critical and crucial services. But they did not pass or make a decision on the bill that was introduced by our department. And that bill is lumped in with other DPS needs through adult probation and corrections. So our department and our Deputy Secretary Billy Lauster has requested that consultants try to reach out to county commissioners through this resolution request, and that we try to get enough resolutions, hopefully all the counties in the state would have a commissioner, in a commissioner's meeting, pass the resolution in favor of increasing our funding. It's no cost to the county, it's just showing that support and that buy-in for our needs. And we would like to put these, these resolutions on the desk of the legislature prior to them going back into their session in the New Year, probably March, when they go back in short session. So that's, you know, that's kind of the crucial situation right now, because there hasn't been any legislative increases in our allocation since 2019 with Raise the Age. And you all know that cost of everything has gone up. And trying to hire court counselors, trying to hire facility staff, with what the public sector, private sector's offering, it's, it's, it's difficult to do. And, and also at the local level here, as you all know, trying to make the money go, as Autumn, you said, working for the government is do more with less, but we're doing a whole lot with less. So I think, you know, it doesn't require a JCPC vote to pass the resolution up to the commissioner, so it's just trying to get it in on the, I guess, the abstract or agenda requested. And as long as it's maybe sometime in the New Year, January, February, that would be a good time for him to do that.
So I looked through, and admittedly, looking at my outlook on my phone is not always 100% certain, but it doesn't appear that I received it. If you send it to me again, I'm sure that Joanna can walk me through how to, how to get that in front of Commissioners, I'll probably write a little letter to go with it.
I think we passed.
You did one before.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll get that one to you.
Okay.
On the second note, I think that might be the same one.
Oh, okay.
Because we passed it about.
It had been like.
March of this calendar year.
Yeah, okay.
Is when, I believe, one went to the board. But I have it saved, so.
I think you're right, because I, I now remembering, I thought it was another county that had sent me an email saying that they had already, already passed the resolution, so it must have been this one then.
Okay. I'll get it to you, I'll send it to you there.
All right.
Either way, we'll make sure it's done.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions for David? All right, seeing none, moving on to my comments. The only thing I have is final accounting and refunds. At the very last page of your agenda packet is a little chart that kind of, it's a bunch of numbers on a page. I'm not going to read them out to you, because you can look at them. Instead, I'm going to open up if anyone has any questions about what they see in that chart. I don't see any online or in person. The county finance office is doing what they have to do as far as the refunds are concerned. It looks like that's all on schedule, under control, no red flags. David's nodding his head, so I think it's, it's all good. All right. The last order of business, I was waiting to find out if we needed some kind of a timeline to reallocate the high school seminar funds for this fiscal year. It doesn't sound like we have that December 31st deadline, so it doesn't sound like we need to have a meeting December 17th, because you all can enjoy the holiday, we'll skip that this year. I know everyone was worried that I was going to be, you know, making everyone show up in December for a meeting, maybe it's never been done before, but I'm not going to do that. So January 21st of the New Year will be the first JCPC, JCPC meeting. It'll be here in the Gord Wicker Room or online virtually, as always. If anyone has any problems or anything, in the meantime, you know where to find me. We'll get that RFP posted, please do your part to spread the word about that and try to encourage people to apply. And thank you all once again for being here, I know we have a bunch of other places that we could be in the afternoon on a Wednesday, but you've taken time to be here and I appreciate that. Dakota, did you have something?
Yeah. From the risk and needs and the funding and the RFP, with the teen corp and the project challenge, we have the, we can ask the county for 30% match. Would you guys use it? We, we hit the 280 that we're allocating, would you benefit from 70,000 more or to be not worth asking?
Yeah, we think so.
But because our number is not now, but for later, like, what can we ask?
As far as the application goes, I mean, right now, they, in the past few years, they have put in there the in-kind amounts, or, you know, in-kind can be, you know, the building or property, and also could, you know, in-kind is, is cash from the, from the nonprofit. And I, I mean, I would just say for other counties that eventually went to getting a 33% match, like Alamance, Alamance was traditionally not funding JCPCs through any cash match, and it was up to the programs to, to build that in. Just like they are now, they've got to build in to their budget for that match internally. I would just say to be on the safe side, to still apply with how you've got your in-kind now in programs. And we put, put that wishlist to the county commissioners to give us the 30% cash match for programs, so that, you know, that, well, even though they apply and they submit, we can always go back in, if we know the county commissioners are going to provide a match, we can always have the programs go back in and redo their budget, and it gives them more breathing room with that cash match, if the commissioners would be that generous to do that. It helps offset like the rent that they're having to pay. So that would be my best advice, just to apply as if you're not going to get it, but we can always go in later after commissioners make a budget decision. And they just have to readjust their budgets.
And it has to make sense.
And it has to make sense, you know, it can't be, you know, taking them out on some retreat to Myrtle Beach or something like that. Fiscally responsible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else before we shut down? Nothing online, nothing in person, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, any opposed? All right, adjourned at 1:53 PM. Thank you all again for being here, and we will see you again January 21st. Working on it. You know how I work. You know how I work, you don't see anything happening. I'm like a duck. On the surface of the water, there's nothing. Under it, my legs are like that. What's up? Let me turn this off real quick.